I'd like to have your attention before we officially start the meeting. Each month we have a moment of silence for talking about the happening region, the community, and the theme of Thanksgiving and moving into the Christmas season. We'd like to take a minute to be thankful, moment of silence that you feel better and comfortable for moving into the holiday, how grateful we are, how blessed we are. We'd love to take that for you. So if you have a moment of silence to think about those who don't have a little blessing, around world wars and issues in real quick Latin America, just a moment of silence for our blessings and gratefulness. Anyone sing holiday song? Any Brown fans tonight? One Russian, consistent. Oh, state band, they're still looking at me. All right, seven o'clock, we have a call or please, now who's filling in for Dan? Thank you, Dan.
Mrs. Pitts, here. Mr. Ferrer?
Here.
Mr. Settles?
Here.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At the beginning of this meeting, it is being recorded for informational purposes. That would feel like a thing up in there.
Does it have to table the minutes for meetings held in November unless she gave that?
No, no, she did not. I'll make a motion to table the minutes, all minutes held in the month.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Settles?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Pitts?
Yes.
Table the motion to pay bills in November.
All right, before we do that, this one should be back, very interesting. The motion to table the bills until next month.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Settles?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Pitts?
Yes.
And on the table will be financial statements also.
All right, I'd like to add something to that. The motion to table the financial statements was a request that was provided to us by the fifteenth of the month to the trustees.
Second.
Any additions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Settles?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Pitts?
Yes.
I don't believe we get any communications. We just not, we went to four here, and we just stay on the radar. Sometimes you're lucky. At this time, as we do each month, we accept public comment on the agenda items only. Later on, we will have an open discussion for any questions, but at this time, if you have any questions, I have an agenda somewhere at the corner of the table there. So at this time, if there are any questions on the agenda items listed for this evening's meeting. I'm going to move on. To your question there.
Thank you. For the month of November, your officer responded to 432 calls, took 56 reports. One was a crash report, 55 were incident reports. There were 19 arrests, two were drug related, four firearm related, one theft burglary or B D related, two assaults or domestic violence protection order arrests, and five warrant arrests. There were 21 traffic citations, four of them were for driving under suspension or no operator's license, three for miscellaneous equipment offenses, four for miscellaneous moving offenses, one for distracted driving, nine for speed. Of the calls taken, we had no burglaries or B Ds, six assault or domestic disturbances, two criminal trespass, five vandalism or criminal damaging reports, six theft reports, and two identity theft reports. We had four threats menacing or telephone harassment complaints, seven disturbances or fights, seven suspicious activity calls, six suspicious person calls, and six suspicious vehicle calls. We had 94 service calls, 15 traffic or parking complaints. We assisted seven disabled motorists, had 12 inward lanes, and 24 alarm drops. Your officers patrol at 11,651 miles and used 850.9 gallons of gas. We had no reversible overtime this month, but 71 hours of regular overtime. This is all on the report.
Okay, any questions from the untrustied?
Are you on air? Yeah, the only other thing I had was a presentation of last, some accommodations. Would you like me to take care of that now?
Please do, yeah.
Okay. One of the officers is on call, so probably best in case he doesn't get a call. I'm just going to give a brief for everyone in the audience. Back on October 7th of this year, approximately 4:30, Brookfield Police Department and Brookfield Fire Department were dispatched to a male found laying on the ground outside an ex-vehicle in a business parking lot. Upon the arrival of Sergeant Dean and Patrolman Leonardo, they located the male, who was unconscious and unresponsive. Upon them assessing the scene, the officers recognized that the male was in distress and not breathing. Officers quickly began life-saving measures, which included performing CPR and the placement of an AED. Officers continued emergency care, including the delivery of a shock by the AED, until EMS crews arrived on scene and took over care. I later received a call and word from the medical staff at the hospital the patient was transported to. They want to let me know that he was the victim of a cardiac arrest, and that they wanted us to know that the officers' quick response, immediate actions of effective CPR and use of the AED, along with the continued care that was provided by EMS, resulted directly in saving the male's life. The patient, they received a pacemaker, and within two weeks was released from the hospital. So it's not always that we get good news on those type of things, obviously. We do respond to a lot of medical calls, and that's not primarily our role, but to hear that actions directly resulted in saving someone's lives is a good thing. So what I'd like to do, normally we have a pin that is issued out to our officers, as well as a certificate that goes in their file. The pins are off order, just taking a long time to come in. So I'd like to ask Officer Leonardo and Sergeant Dean to step forward. Ready, real quick, Brookfield Police Department certificate, a commendation. This certificate is proudly awarded to Sergeant Cody Dean and Officer Leonardo. This commendation is awarded as a result of the actions taken by the above-named officers on October 7th, 2024, to save or preserve a human life that would have otherwise expired without immediate intervention or care. Proud of you guys, thank you, it's amazing.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Appreciate it. Glad you're on our team, guys, thanks. Those intense stories and so overwhelming, and thank you again, and that day's setup and natural act of us, thank you so much, and thank you for being here.
I think our police and fire can attest to the fact that you might go to a call like that, you might do all those things, and you did, and to no avail, the person passes, but when they survive, and you were able to see them the next day or a week later, it's got to be a great feeling. That'll never leave you, it makes you the job whole, I think. Really appreciate that you're here and you were able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our chief of fire is on vacation, so we have to bring in Captain Nick.
All right, Dan, who's on? Sorry, new here. Sorry. All right, so the fire department, what's that?
Will help me through this.
Okay, great. All right, so the fire department ran a total of 167 calls for the month of November. Breaking that down, it was 125 emergency medical services EMS. We responded to six structure fires, seven motor vehicle crashes, we did not respond to any vehicle fires. We responded to 14 rubbish oil, gas, oil brush fire, and permanent plants, but a combination thereof. 12 service calls includes gasoline, carbon monoxide, smoke investigations, and public assist, like those type of calls. Zero wired tree down, we went to two firearm investigations. We received 14 calls for mutual aid assistance, and we assisted our neighboring communities 21 times. Is he through into the Hartford and?
Yeah, he mentioned.
Okay, so in Hartford, we ran nine EMS calls, in Vienna, we ran nine EMS calls. Motor vehicle crash, we ran one in Hartford, two in Vienna. We ran one miscellaneous fire in Hartford, and one service call in Vienna, and two firearm investigations in Hartford, that's in the wrong category. So overtime, 122 hours of overtime, 48 hours of that was in Garcia, 13 hours was in shipped overtime, we had some small holiday hours, zero special events this month. We had two and a half hours of shift full orders, late calls, call access type of things, zero weather-related overtime, and in our, this month was host testing, finishing up host testing, and that took quite a bit, 16 and a half hours of overtime to complete that. Seven and a half hours was taken in comp time versus paid. Thank you. All right, carry on through to the bottom. Yep, okay. So both state and federal grants have been worked on to submit at upcoming deadlines. The FEMA grant, the EFT grant, we're going for operations to the vehicle again, as always, we're always trying to lead on the federal grants like that. We're also submitting for the state equipment grant, the OGNR grant, and there's another one in there mixed in. So Station 51 was closed 40, and 60 ships, we already seen an uptick in our part-time health pick-up, which allows us to open that station up down there. And personnel, we're going to go down, go to that left, and then apparatus, equipment, battery-operated extra cage moves, ventilation equipment, and seat mounting has been ordered.
When's the light coming on that? We'll get it.
Yeah, if he says March, I was going to say probably like six months usually, but if it's less than six months, I'd be surprised. Any normal ordering stuff is about that window. So, yeah, March should probably seem appropriate. On the left, asked a motion to hire Mr. Shane Holender as a part-time firefighter EMT basic at the rate of $15 an hour and no additional benefits.
I'd like to make a motion to hire Mr. Shane Holender as a part-time firefighter slash EMT basic at the rate of $15 an hour and no additional benefits.
I'll second. Any additions, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Ferrer?
Yes.
I've only had one on the list there. Thank you for filling in this evening, and any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Road superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Road report for the month of November. Total hours, regular hours worked, 707. We had eight hours overtime, which is Saturday variable. Total 17 hours of that, we used 20 in administration, we had 110 in road projects, that was, we did some site restoration from the P A program, we had to yard some cross culvert areas, we had to clean up and see, we restored the yard up on whatever you wanted to do, and a couple of cross culverts also operate at the K. Eighty hours in routine auto maintenance, primarily puddle patching, de-ice supply, we had 20 hours just mixing salt. Equipment maintenance and repairs, we had 115 hours, most of that was just getting a snow footprint prep to ready for the season. Tree cutting, we had 60 hours of that, consisted primarily up on Pacific, Atlantic, and Brentwood. So those were ready to do some, put some millings on them and give them graded. I left you here, we had a call from the post office about Pacific Street because it was washed out, they were discontinuing mail.
It did, that's the way it was, right?
Yeah, so, so we went up there and kind of graded that off, that little motor home up there, it's been sitting alongside the roof for a while in the dumpster, we got that removed, and so if we get, if the temperature comes up a little bit, which exposed you, then we'll get some milling on those trucks and get them dressed up a little bit. Cemetery, we had 179 hours, we applied cremation barrels and three regular charred barrels. Shop time, we had 30 hours, 20 hours miscellaneous, we did some, replaced a light and repaired the banner poles that were damnalism, so working machinery, we have a couple more lights to really replace as soon as we turn, we turn away the lights, it's getting easier, we're going to try to match that up and get it closed. Six hours on a wildwood drive, just to some of the, tried to nail down some of the details for the store and store project, and then we had some information with the county on the issue line that we had to discuss and hired out. It's 75 hours at the park, so the bathrooms are shut down at the park. The seasonal work is done, it's done on the 15th of November, so park is, there's nobody there, so we go down periodically just to check. The AED was pulled out, so it's back.
Would you put it?
It's, it's our. And gasoline, the road department used 78.1 gallons of gas and 163.3 gallons of diesel fuel. Cemetery used 22.8 gallons of gasoline. They're going to do the scene here in the code, you know, report?
Yes.
That's all I have on the report, if there's any questions on that, I will turn that in.
I have a question about the the park.
Yeah.
Did you check the gate since they did the, you set it up, when it's opening and closing? Did we, did we confirm that it's within the hours you want it?
Yeah, I'll check, I'll recheck it, because I think I maybe added it, we moved it up to eight, I think, and seven, seven, eight.
Even if we asked maybe one of the police officers, you're going to drive by it and confirm that it is closing?
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Anything else for Janice Freyler?
Going on to the agenda items?
Yes.
The waterline project in Major. Town had a call, they want to know about our waterline project. We don't have a waterline project?
The county doesn't have that.
The county doesn't have a waterline project. It's Aqua, I just bring it up to just kind of keep the residents abreast of what's going on down there, because Aqua is working on several streets down there, they're on Second, Third, Elm, South Street, so there's construction down there, I just want them to be aware, especially with the snowy weather, because there might be plates on the road, just be careful when you're down there that they are, they are working, installing, waterline down there, so just, it's just for informational things, we're not doing a waterline.
And they didn't coordinate with us when you were going to do it, I think it's kind of two times, do it in the middle of winter, but?
Yeah, well, sometimes they say in the winter because it keeps people working, yeah, it keeps them working, and sometimes they get a better price. The next item is just, again, this is not something we need to do, but I, when Deon gets back, I talked with the county, so the 20th of December is when our final application is due for our grant projects. She has to do, if you remember, we did a, we did one for our own project, she has to certify that we have $75,000 in our funds to pay our public works commission when this project's completed. So it's just a, it's a formality that she'll have to do, but when she gets back, we'll have her do that, that we can get that, send that in the bag. Everything with our public works now, it used to be, you know, we put the papers all together, get all, and we mail it. But now they have a portal to go to and to download, you have to scan a document, download the documents, so everything has to be, quite frankly, I prefer the old way myself. Now the way it's going, so.
So we already confirmed this is our project that we're sharing with?
Yes.
Have we already confirmed that we have the funds available for our project, or has not?
No, we did have, all right. I wasn't sure at the time, if you remember, I wasn't sure at the time that we needed to do more than we had already done for that project, the county said we ought to do this. So, that's all I have for the road items, if you have anything. The miscellaneous items, basically, I just want to let you know that we, we had the crash scrap tire pickup in May, so I think we got about just a little over 500 in May. Then we, we were working with Pete, there was a couple houses that, I know one on Vander Street that has to be torn down, and they wanted to tear it down, so there was tires inside the house. That's a whole different story, but, so they were inside. And that located one on Science Street, and one up on Diamond Street, so total, we ended up with this over, I think it was about just under 1,200 tires total between the two of them, and our grant was 4,171, I think we ended up at 4,060. So it was real close, yeah, so.
Squeezed another four tires about.
Could have got some more tires. But so that, and that, that reimbursement, the request has already been sent, and so Deon should be getting, at least she said she would email me if there was any problem and I'd get anything back, so assuming everything is, couple seconds, she should get a check for like four or five years or something. One other item that I did have on the report, but I'm going to throw it out there because I want to see more, but I did hit deer a couple weeks ago, you guys know that, they didn't know that, so that, the truck, I can contact the insurance company, the adjuster hasn't been out yet, so I don't know what's happened to that truck, so. But it's undrivable, I don't want to put any money into it.
You didn't get hurt, so?
No, I don't do that, well, somebody got hurt, it wasn't me, but I saw, I'm sure everybody knows, this is hunting season, but I don't know if the deer population, I didn't check it, deer population is high, maybe, but there's been a lot of deer hunts this year.
Right.
And, but even especially deer season, just be careful, because there's a lot of hunters out, they're pushing deer, bucks are chasing does, and so.
So that too.
And I saw one this morning in Brash, and one got hit down by the golf course, I was in the middle of the road.
Yes, there's used more damage.
Just real quick, can we finish, have the guy bring up the last two?
I thought you wanted to do one. You want the other two?
Yeah, I was actually thinking.
Yeah, I can do as much as I can by myself, but that's the one thing I cannot basically do, so.
No, no problem, yeah, I was going up, I didn't.
Yeah, and then.
Do you want them inside, do you want them out?
Just put them in, just for that, because they're getting a little warm.
Okay.
About the cemetery, Janie, anything else on the cemetery? You addressed earlier.
I think.
You talked about the cremations and?
Yeah, that was just before you did. Yeah. That's all I have.
Anything else for Janie, if anyone?
Thank you.
Cover on the street.
Okay, I voiced this month, so I can say, read this report through. Permits, 369 State Route 7 is a roof replacement, 74.3 Oakwood Drive is a accessory, Marage Home Foundation, 7334 Oakwood Drive is a new single-family dwelling. New complaints, 8136 Diamond Street, roof needs repair slash replacement, 870 West State Line Road dumping is taking place, the Health Department is assisting, 716 South State Line Road is the same, 7877 South Street is offerable vehicles, 7880 South Street same, 600 block of James Street, open dump is taking place, 8103 Alpham Street is grass and woods, the plane motor has cut, there's a new construction of the gas station at 900 Irvine Avenue, truffle soil and water is wandering, run off issue, and that's it.
Yeah, up to the end of the report. Collected $40 in November, drove 234 miles, skis, nine hours, hitched one, who've had 10 and a half, 20 and a half hours. Want to thank our volunteers, the seating, to the, is the lead getting ready or?
I actually have one on tape.
Good, more drives would happen, maybe expand the program a little bit, seems like 234 miles.
Yeah, we'll get a young sample for the VA, probably once, and more, so that gives a lot of work there.
Yeah, that's a good service, thank you. At this point, we're going to be on business, I'm just, no business, I'm not even, at this point, we have, we have a question, we have a seller, sure, Jessica, can I, you have the board, I can come in.
Hello, my name is Jessica Blingsmith, this is Karen Metz, and we work for Western and Southern Life, which is a whole-service financial company. First, I would like to thank Shannon for allowing us to have the floor for a minute to really face ourselves as a resource and let you guys and your family know that we are here regarding financial services. A group of people that we frequently work with are families with young children. A lot of time, these individuals are afraid if they lose a spouse, it can alter their way of living. A lot of people are concerned about saving money for college or education, and also some people can be overwhelmed by the thought of preparing for retirement. So our job is to listen, and simplify, and really create a personalized solution to help each individual get to their goals. So, yeah, again, we work for Western and Southern Life, we are at the Hermitage office, you might have seen or heard of us offering our services to the community, we have been volunteering our time and resources at local events, charities, organizations, we have visited the fire department, police station, it really just places ourselves as resource. So if anyone has any questions, if we are allowed to give or leave our business hours. Thank you, thank you. If anyone has any questions, they can reach out, both of our information will be on there, and then if you were interested, we can connect at a later time.
And we will also be at the Jingle Bingo out here at the Vasego here in two weekends. It's hard to think that that's a weekend, it's my office.
Terrific.
Yes, very terrifying, but kind of put the bow on it, is we deal with life insurance as well as investments, healthcare for businesses, we do a whole lot, et cetera. So if you need us for any reason, give us a call.
And you guys are gonna do IT kits there too?
Yes, yes.
So well done, and everybody.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
This time, as I mentioned earlier, we'll have comments on the agenda, but they're comments that are, they have a statement, it's your opinion to share that with us. Janice, your comment to Baby, what was gone on, Urban Chase, person over, okay? Two thumbs up about this, if you're ready.
Little wire, isn't it?
Yes.
That was a bad section.
We appreciate it as well.
Shannon, what's going on with the grant?
Yes, sir, so we got projected for ODNR, we got our letter last week. Was on the phone today with Dustin, we have plans, we all met in the middle of last, it was past month. Sat down with some goals for twenty twenty-five, so we have some things in fire that we're gonna do a little creatively to assist maybe getting a job. We stuff the police that we're working on, and then the next big project is we're hoping to try to work with the school on sidewalks, some of the girl prayer townships, so. We're gonna have another kind of reconnecting meeting here at the beginning of the year, and maybe they could strike out again. The ODNR grant, they picked another one in Trump County. They're gonna have, so we have to check this together.
Nothing bad, should, nothing bad.
Yep, trying.
Library report?
Not just the library report, but she has lots of great things going on. Now Mrs. Claus. We have two local moves in just about two weeks, we have lots of fun things, Wayne Beak, well, I'm living, Mrs. Claus performing story contest, along with, you can never say it's over.
It was well-attended last year.
It was pretty well-attended. And the usual, we had the group, and obviously, they had outside tornado angles. That about it, yeah. We have a couple other community organizations that are also participating for the reunion, and the major performance club, the school library will have a table there as well, schools may have some stuff there as well, people can, children can bring their letters for Santa Claus to deliver to North Pole when she goes back. And, donations, I think, still, scrub off the gates, anybody would like to contribute to that. The event goes from six-thirty until eight, fire station will be there when there's more stations again. Speech is held, a lot of fun things that are planned for that evening, and hope to see everybody in the community come out and, 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 and. And as to the library, we had several programs coming up with about three holidays. The first one is on this Saturday, at one o'clock in the morning, the registration required. We also had another ten-week session of a group support group, starting on Thursday, this Thursday, the fifth, from three-thirty to four-thirty. That one does our initiation, you can do that on libraries, website or topics or call.
Any additional comments this time? So now we're on, just the, Shannon.
Just to piggyback off of what Amanda said, we're trying, one thing that, when I kind of came here, everybody kept saying there's nothing to do, there's nothing for us to do for the kids. What we're trying to do is work together and develop some magical experiences for our, our kids, young and old, everybody, so hopefully, it's, it's well-attended. There's always things to do for the library, things to do around town, so hopefully, this works out well for the community. Ready for next one?
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a couple things. One is, mentioned with the tire program, Janie, in that process, we discovered, or I don't know how many, probably four or five hundred tires that are straddling the Hubbard Township, Brookfield Township line. And we're trying to determine whose they are. We're with Janie and the EPA, I'm working with the two trustees from Hubbard Township, Mr. Tendro and Mr. Coletta. We're gonna try to get these tires, and we have to get them somewhere, and then the EPA will come, it has to be more than a hundred tires, and it's unlimited, and we have two other locations in Hubbard, so we're looking at probably close to a thousand tires, we're gonna try to get them picked up. The ones that are in Hubbard Brookfield line are, they're kind of in the Culver Lake area, so you have to go get them, that's one reason why we couldn't do it on our program, they were off the beaten path, so we're gonna be working on that, and hopefully, through the first of the year, try to get those tires taken care of. We're gonna do a joint effort where his guys to get the tires out of there, and maybe get them to Hubbard, and put them in, they have to be in one place, and then have them picked up by EPA, so we'll be working on that first couple months of the year. The other thing is, we were supposed to introduce tonight the Brookfield Township app, we had some problems setting things up with, with the company, so we're gonna probably put that off to, I'm thinking by the first of the year, hopefully before. But if we come into an app store near you, or even called My Brookfield, we've got the name of it already, and it'll be an app that's branded just to our township, that it, it's an alert system or notification system for the citizens. We can do so much with it, we're gonna start out and build it as we go, but as I said before, emergency issues, road closures, oil alerts, things like that, we'll be able to push it out via the app, you'll get them immediately, so you can be up on what's going on. The other thing is, we want to work streetlight out, the weather, emergency weather network, it's a winged system, it'll have a link to it, that you can go and get registered there, a lot of things that the app can do, and we're kind of excited. Holland Township is one of the newest ones in, in Trump County that's taken this app on, and I've been working with the administrator, James Bannell, on there. So it seems like it's gonna be a great project, and it's another way for the public to know what's going on in Brookfield, and you know, when you sometimes are we supposed to, or are we not, it'll really get a push out right away when something like that happens. Snow emergencies, you can't park in the roads, various things that we're gonna be able to keep you in the loop, so we're excited to get this going. It's just, we got a little left here on some scheduling, so we'll get it out here before the, hopefully right after the first of the year.
Thank you, Dan. I hope we're, to get something else?
Yeah, just real quick, we're just lying down on our projects, we have a meeting tomorrow, but I just wanted to, to let everybody know, once we're, we're done with all this, I think, speaking board, we want to post kind of what we did in our factories, investments were across the township, so. We have less than a month left, we have a couple things, we're gonna do some big projects, just to let everybody know we're rocking.
It's tomorrow at ten, and we'll have some throughout the month.
And we're, we're gonna provide it in various places, the website that we want, but I'd like to print it out and, and make it available. We had about eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, they were taken, and the projects, we were limited somewhat on what we could do with this money, but we did a lot, we spread it out, I mean, if you, you've been watching the news all year, Trump County, for instance, commissioners who, this isn't even counting our eight hundred, we received four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars from the commissioners for a storm sewer project. But it's, everybody's the buzzer, they're like, Art, what did you do with your art funds? But we think you should know what we did with your art funds, we did a lot, we, I think every one of us had a project, we listened to citizens that had a project, department heads that had projects, so we, we areas, and we want you to know every dog, where it went, and what we did with it, so that'll be coming up, like Shannon said, and right when we're done, we're gonna go get a list out, a lot of knowledge out. Last thing I have, is moving on all that to the center, but thank what we have, and we're even thinking forward, whatever it is in your life, in your family, in your situation, I think that all did help us. Thank you for coming, be safe going, and group motion, group it, we're gonna have to skip it in the next couple weeks, and then the area event, so we might keep that on the radar, this will obviously, I mean, the last week, we're cheap.
Probably write down the wire last week. Any additional comments? Not most of the charge, make a motion picture.
I'll second.
Thank you, be safe.
We have to break down, it's not a issue, we've already been stretching.
Yeah, it's just itself out, it's like, so.